Roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Need approval of minutes for Public Works Meeting. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They're reporting recommendation for purchase of a generator on the Potter Street Water Pumping Station through the National Joint Powers Alliance and Patent Cat. And the not to exceed amount 109,000, uh, 109,200 dollars. That's my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Wesley.
Anyone, how old is that generator? Don't we have a generator now?
Oh, Mr. York.
Hello. Yes, we do have a generator now. It's a diesel under, a diesel generator with an underground storage tank. It came in when the pump station was built, so it was in the sixties, early seventies.
Okay, so again.
It's well passed.
Okay.
Follow up? There.
Matt, that was, so this price is just for the generator?
Yes.
Not installed?
No.
And not the old one taken out?
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Wesley.
Now raise another question. So what's the good cost install? Why wouldn't we do it all together at once?
Mr. York.
Okay, so we finally, after about two months, three months of trying to figure out which generator we needed to purchase, we finally figured that out. We did not bring it forward all at once because we're not, we don't have the price for the installation because that has to go off the bid still. And this is 10 to 12 weeks out. So we need to get this ordered so that we can get it in.
Do you have a ballpark for your [inaudible]?
No. We had budgeted 210,000 for the project.
Okay. The minute taker take notice that Alderman Messina is here now. Matt, did you say, how old did you say that was?
It's original to the, to the station, so I don't have the exact date.
Would it behoove us not to keep the old one and have it remount, rebuilt or, as a spare?
The issue with the old one is that it's a diesel engine motor with the underground storage tank. So the underground storage tank causes a lot of headaches for people like Mr. Wilson, has to do a report every year. We have to pay extra insurance for underground storage tank. And also, the underground storage tank itself that we have is in need of replacement.
Okay.
So with all those factors involved, this is going to a natural gas generator. It'll be safer for us moving forward and will also reduce some of the additional costs.
All right. Any other questions? Any questions on that? I need a roll call. Need a roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Outstanding.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Motion carries. Yeah, items to be considered for future meetings. City Hall Ballards. Oh, Mayor.
Yeah, under, I just, it's not a future item, but I received a letter from basically Mr. Eric Marong from the Wooddale Junior High Symphony Band. They made Superstate again this year and we were going to invite him over to a council meeting. Doesn't seem like the council meetings work. If you guys don't have objections, you know, we could recognize him on a committee meeting, but being you guys as chairman, so.
Have no problem with that.
Okay, so I'll offer him up a couple other dates and see if he can make it. And then there's one other thing. It's not on here because we're, this is Public Works and we don't have Building Department tonight, but parking variations. Had another person call me, they were trying to bring in a business salon of some ki, salon, I believe, but the parking, they were short. And they go, your building department won't even, can't talk to me because, you know, they said I don't have enough parking. And I explained to them, we do not have variations and basically you can't even go for a variation. So unfortunately, the building department's hands are tied until the council makes some changes in that. So if we can put that on a future agenda item, unless you guys still object, I know we talked about this a year and a half ago and there was no appetite for it, but some projects are coming forward and I hate to see a building, I know you can build a 5,000 square foot building, you're short two spots, can't give you a variance, shrink the building. Come on. Unless.
Can we have that ready by next meeting?
I don't know.
Can you add it to the future agenda, or closer, move it up a little bit? Thanks.
Okay, sorry.
City Hall Ballers, May 12th. Streetlight Survey is May 12th. Irving Park Road Street Lighting to be determined and City Hall Landscaping to be determined. Anything else? Alderman Wesley.
I just gotta ask one question. All the streetlights that we took down, the old streets signs, the lights that we took down for Wooddale and Irving, they parked, right now they over at the wastewater treatment plant outside, right?
What kind of lights?
The decorated streetlights, like we have in front of City Hall.
Prairie lights?
Prairie lights.
Okay.
What are we doing with those? They parked out there piled up. I mean, what was the future of those lights that we took down? Were we putting them up, back up somewhere, or were you throwing away, or what are we doing?
Mr. York.
We had talked about in the past that the prairie lights would have to be painted at some point in time in the future. So what we were hoping to utilize those for was to paint those and if they had to be removed to be painted was to kind of use those and, you know, kind of swap them out as we moved along. If we decide that we're not going to do that or we can paint in place, we do have the Division Street Project that is on the books for this year that is going to utilize those prairie style lights. We can utilize them over there.
Okay, I just don't want to see those go right to the roadside. If we got streetlights and we talked about doing every park road, let's paint them up or whatever.
And there's also, in the budget, there's also the Irving, or the rest of Wooddale Road.
Right.
We talked about. Addison Road has been discussed, so I don't think they're going to go to waste and we're not going to get rid of them, but so they'll be utilized in a future project.
Alderman Catalano.
On the future meetings, you said May 12th, May 12th, that's a Saturday. Are we going to change that? Because I don't think I want to come in on a Saturday.
We are. We made ten. Made ten.
Just so you know, we changed everything to May 10th, or Streetlight Survey, City Ballards to May 10th. Correction.
Good catch.
Except for Tony will be here on May 12th.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Oh, I thank you, Alderman Sizmarski. Just on personal note, I think the Wooddale Road Streetlights look absolutely incredible. These prairie lights just put a wow effect. And you may want to carry that wow effect into the Ballards where we go to take a look at that again. Street looks incredible. You guys are doing a great job. Proud to Sam Reson in this lovely city that's on a huge move forward.
Alderman Messina.
I think you just hit it off.
Oh. Uh, motion for adjournment, need a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.
I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee meeting to order. Please have the minute taker note that the same people are present. First, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve minutes from this.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, reports and recommendations. We have a master fee schedule. This is part two. This is the one we were supposed to be scared about. So I pass it on to you guys and I have my coffee, so I'm ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, as you said, this is part duh. You know, part three, if needed, would be in two weeks. Optimistic that we won't, but we built it into the schedule as it were. So tonight.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any questions? So I have a question.
Here's, here's the thing.
Hold on. Did you have a question?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
And the reason why I'm saying, we've been talking about increasing these fees for a while. We are low on our fees. We need to bring up like all the other times. So I don't see why we're going to have our discussion on this.
Mayor?
Before we vote, can we at least see the presentation? It's only going to be like, what, five minutes? Just, just for the viewers at home, not, and not everything went up, some stuff did go down. And I know I asked, if we're in line with other communities, I want to make sure we're not the highest. And we're not, so.
Well, we have a motion, we have a second. I know people do want to see it. The meeting is posted as far as watching the video. But I had one question before we decide if we're taking a vote or not, I guess. So Matt, or Brad, I had texted you earlier. Will that fee be discussed in this conversation regarding the reinspection?
Specifically, you're speaking of the rental housing fee reinspection. Defer to Ms. Chrissy, we talked about it.
So I'll ask the question so people at home can hear it.
I will receive my motion.
We can have the motion.
You know, we have a motion, we have a second, so we can ask questions. So my question earlier was, and I want to get the council's opinion on this, the current, the current proposal for reinspection of a unit in an apartment building is $250 to reinspect. And you know and I know who gets hit with that charge. It's not the landlord, most likely. So I would really like to see a change to that before we move forward and we can maybe move forward with passing it subject to a change. Ms. Chrissy?
Two weeks ago, we presented Chapter Six and the rental housing fees are in Chapter Six. The current fee is $250 per inspection, per inspector, and our recommendation and the council's approval was to lower that to be in line with the reinspection fees, which would be in Chapter 12, which is then the subject of discussion tonight. So we did address the concern that you had because we also shared that concern.
Brad's text was cryptic and couldn't, okay, that's what you meant. Okay, so that's, okay, got it. Mayor Pro Temp Woods?
Thank you. I just wanted to address, my belief is that the landlord does pay that fee. In all the cases that I know of, the landlord actually did pay the fee. They're the ones responsible, right, for the inspection?
Do you think they roll it in? I'm sorry. I'll raise my own hand. I was just worried they would roll it into any secured deposit or fees when you, when you sign on. If it's typical, I mean, then so be it, but.
But if they did, it would take a year to do that, right? Because there's already active lease, they can't just like slide it in.
True.
Of which case, then their people move out, right, if they jack it up too much, so.
Okay, that's fair. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Another question?
On that fee, so if we're talking about a six flat, is it just, is it different fee for six units, two units?
Ms. Chrissy?
So the fee structure is actually $150 for registration for the first unit and then it's $50 per additional unit. The reinspection fees only come into play when, if, if a unit fails the inspection, then they would be subject to the reinspection fee. But otherwise, it would just be the rental registration fee dependent upon the number of buildings and the number of units within the building.
Okay. Is this a yearly inspection fee?
It is.
Okay. Because I do know some communities, especially River Grove, they do it every two years. I mean, have we, would we looked into doing that every other year?
Inspection? I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat that?
No, I'm just saying some communities, they do every other year instead of every year. I mean, would that help the situation out?
So, I mean, we have a motion, we have a second on that. Do we have to vote on that first before we?
You can have discussion after a motion. So she can give the presentation, the motion sits there. Now, if you guys change the motion, then you would have to be.
Alderman Catalano was talking about possibly amending that?
And.
And that's where the motioner would have to.
And then, right, you would have to agree if, you have to discussion, right?
Okay.
And motion or a second, they would have to agree.
So why don't we let, if it's five minutes, let's let you go through the presentation. We have a motion on the floor, we have a potential amendment after, so let's see what you have and we'll go from there.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I'll go back one, yeah, okay. As we said, two weeks ago, tonight, we're going to save for Chapter 12, 13, and 17. Two weeks ago, we did put 18 in there, but that's the administrative adjudication, which is set by statute and/or the presiding adjudicator at the time, so there's nothing for us to amend in 18. Again, the document format that was presented in the packet was similar to two weeks ago. And then again, you know, if we are going to move through or try to get a consensus on each chapter or each item before we move on, just to avoid a lot of, you know, flipping back and forth, kind of like we do with the budget and the CIP, try to take it in manageable blocks and chunks before moving on. With that, the rest of the slides, I'm going to defer to Ms. Chrissy, if it's okay with the chairman, to continue forward.
Continue, please.
Okay, so I just wanted to sort of summarize the approach that we took when reviewing the building permit fees. As we compiled all of these fees, we realized not only sort of in the day-to-day administration how difficult it was to administer, but the magnitude of the, the number of fees that we have, and so that was really striking to us. But what we wanted to do was really simplify this and create transparency with not only developers, but residents and other property owners as to what fees they would likely incur for different types of permits. We also wanted to streamline the administration, which would help in terms of the customer service and turnaround time. So we have a lot of processes now that take a lot of administrative time that are not meeting the intent of those regulations, and so we've taken a look at those. And then the, the final goal was to really try and reasonably cover costs of delivering the service. And so we did a lot of extensive review of our process. We identified the various permit types. We identified the types of inspections that would be required for each permit. We identified how much time and who has to review each permit. And we tried to, as best we could, estimate the actual amount of time and cost for us to deliver each type of permit. And so that's really where these fees are generated from.
Ms. Chrissy? Sorry to interrupt, you have a question? This is all great, but I guess my question is, and I've said this many times before, but I didn't see it in anything, maybe I missed it in what I read, but how much of this are we moving online, if anything? That was a whole.
So our intention is to move to online permitting and with the ERP system that we will hopefully be entering into contract negotiations and all of that, we intend to do that. And so again, that's part of the streamlining, the administration, and we've been taking a really hard look at our process. And all of this is actually in preparation for moving to that ERP system so that we can really provide better customer service.
So as my follow-up to that, it's probably a Jeff question. We keep hearing about the ERP and all these streamlined reports we're going to get and all these systems, and now I'm hearing we might be in negotiations. Can we get, I know you guys are scared of timelines, but can we get a timeline of when we can see this all streamlined? Because I know there's been a lot of things that have kind of said, hey, wait till the ERP system comes and I'll get you this, or I'll get you that, and I'll get you this, and I'll get you that.
Sure, yeah. If you remember, in the CIP, it's actually listed as a multi-year project.
Right.
So it is continuing on for this coming fiscal year, May 1. We expect to get some, some big action this fiscal year, implementation, at least the start of it, if I'm not mistaken. We should have some contracts to the council, I would say probably beginning of the fiscal year and then start.
My only ask, and I don't know about the rest of the council, is anything that's public facing that can help the experience of the residents? Can we prioritize that? And the stuff that, maybe the back office stuff that just makes the processes a little easier, no offense, maybe makes your jobs faster, maybe make that a second phase? It might be already part of what you're planning, but.
Yeah, and all, and all my research and talking with IT Director Case, it seems like this ERP thing is just a monumental task and undertaking and takes years to, to implement and many parties to get it up and running. And it's really only as good as, as you plan for it to be. So, yeah, I mean, we can, we can talk to him and talk to our consultants about that.
Sure. Thanks. Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So with this, I know how long we've been waiting for that system to come online and we've talked about so long. So can we prioritize the building department first and go, they go online first and get all this up first?
City Manager Mermis?
Yeah, you know, I'll go back and I'll talk with Nick about it. Not really the, the focus of the agenda item tonight, but point well taken and I'll certainly make that a point.
Just to be clear, too, we have a business partner, we have a consultant helping Nick, right? This is nothing he's trying to stand up on his own?
Yeah, I just put some information on that out last week and we're, if he were to do it completely on his own, he would be paralyzed to do any other work. It's that monumental of a task, so, correct.
Yep, yep. Any other questions? Okay, please continue.
Very good. So in terms of the considerations that we took into account, as far as the permit fees, there are two permit fee types. There is a calculation, which is based on the square foot construction cost, which you have a copy on the DIES and I'll get into that in a little bit, but these are national average construction costs. So in terms of the contractor having to provide the construction value of a job, there's no longer a question as to whether or not they're telling the truth about the construction value or perhaps discounting their work. This is a national average that we would be using. Though, the important note about this is that it does get updated annually and so when we review the fee ordinance on an annual basis, we can then adopt the newest, the newest version. There are also a major, or a lot of flat fees to make things, again, easy to understand. And with those flat fees, we did have a conversation with the fire district and their staff and they are actually looking to update the IGA relative to the fees that they charge for their services. And so you will be seeing a revised IGA with the fire district as a result of this, should the, this be approved.
So that code, that's for the building code of appeals, the $300?
And so the final note here is that one of the things that we had omitted initially, it is not on the, was not in the packet and we just realized it, I believe it was yesterday. We do have a process for the UDO where there is a $300 fee for appeals of the development administrator, but we do not have that same fee in, for the building code where there is an appeal process for that as well. And so we felt if we were going to have it in one place, we should be consistent with that process as well. So we were just asking if that's something that the council wants to see.
So I just want to be clear, so you have a flat fee for the fire district and they want to see an increase that's consistent with other fees in other parts of the country? And then we have this building code of, code of appeals that's separate, that's $300 that would hit a builder. Am I correct? Nope?
If I could clarify.
Please.
So the, the fire district reviewed their fees. And, and as part of that would need to revise the IGA with the city. And we took those revised fees that they recommended or that they want to use and built that into our then flat fee structure so that we could account for those fees. Because ultimately, what happens is the fire district bills us for plan reviews and inspections and so.
Do you have those numbers, though? I mean, I, I don't want to get to a point where they're increasing it.
They are not actually increasing their fees.
So why would they want to restructure the IGA if they're not, you said they're, okay, I guess, I guess I'm confused. You just said that you, they were restructuring, they want to restructure the IGA because of their fees, but you're saying they don't want to increase the fees, so are they lowering it?
They're, they're actually just trying to streamline the fees. So right now, a sprinkler permit is based on the number of sprinkler heads.
Okay.
And they want to have a flat fee for sprinkler permits. And much like some of the other permit types where it's based on the volume of the space, for example, and that isn't, it's difficult to administer, which is a reason why we're going, getting away from that structure. And so they're looking to streamline their fees as well. And so in some cases, their fees that they're wanting to approve, those are lower than what may be required now, but again, it's variable because it, it's based on the volume of the space or it's based on the number of sprinkler heads or things like that.
Okay, okay, that makes more sense. Sorry about that.
Yes, I apologize for my.
No, it's my fault. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So when we talk about fire districts, flat fee, yet new constructions or when we join up with them for inspections, annual inspections?
Ms. Chrissy?
So the commercial occupancy program is not part of these fees. The IGA includes both fees. So when we bring forward the revised IGA, you'll see no change in the commercial occupancy fees for their inspection process as part of that.
You have a follow-up? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I Williams.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Sorrentino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask that this five-minute presentation take five minutes and then if we could make notes and perhaps ask questions.
At the end?
After the five minutes.
Duly noted, personally noted. Go ahead, Ms. Chrissy.
And so I did want to, I know that on the DIES, I, I put the square foot construction costs so that you could see, it comes from the International Code Council, which is the company that we use for our, our codebooks. And again, it's a national average and it is based on the use classification as well as the construction type. And again, this is, these calculations are limited to the types of projects where the scope can vary widely, so it would likely be for new single families, new commercial or industrial buildings, additions and interior alterations. So again, we tried to focus the fee structure on the flat fee where we could and then this calculation would be based on those where the scope just is, is variable. Then I also have just a couple notes about the new structure for the fees. We do have a non-refundable deposit, which is no different than we currently have. However, what we are doing is we are trying to match up those deposits more closely with the actual cost of the permit. Right now, we may take in, based on the structure of the permit deposit, we may take in a $600 deposit for a permit that only costs $48, which does not make much sense. So we just restructured that so that it makes more sense for the permits based on the, relative to the cost of the permit. In terms of the fee, we already talked about the calculation or the flat fee for the permit fee. The bond requirements currently are code, requires a bond for every single permit. That is not something that is necessary, in our opinion. And so what we've done, what we've done is suggested a construction management bond. And so this would apply to the larger scale projects that could potentially cause damage to public property and it is set typically at $5,000. It also would include work that is within the right of way or on utilities that could then affect the public utilities. And so this is intended to be a safeguard for, for that as well as to ensure that additions or new construction are not occupied without receiving the proper approvals. And then finally, we do have another column for other fees or security. And again, this is intended to provide transparency so that if somebody who is building a new home can look at this and understand what other fees may be applicable that are not necessarily a building permit fee, but could apply in their situation. And so again, we just tried to make things a little more straightforward for people.
Any questions? Mayor?
Is this the end?
That's the end. She said she's done. Simple question, on the square foot construction cost, I know you said this is a variable per the International Code Council and this is going to change every year. I'm sure there's a way we can make this to the motion so it coincides with this every year and doesn't have to come to the council just for cleanup purposes.
Finance Director Wilson?
Sure, so a couple things. One, it's very similar what we're doing with, with that piece, like what we do with the per diems where we use the GSA rate, so it's a national rate, so it takes a lot of the, the argument or, you know, takes a lot of the conversation out of it since it's a national, national rate. To your point, the intent of this fee schedule would be to come back on an annual basis to revise and re-atest everything that's in there. Might be this form of big conversation every year, but this would certainly be one of the things that would be updated every year. The meter fee rate schedule would be updated, the water and sewer rates perhaps, you know, are changed on an annual basis. So it would be a couple of things that would come back on an annual basis anyways and this will be rolled into, would probably do it November, December, just as a matter of course. And this will be one of the things that will be included in that. We try to line it up for the things when I like six months, six months, but it would just be S O P after the, the first time we go through it.
Have a follow-up, Mayor?
No, no.
Next question?
So we have a roll call to not allow Alderman Woods to ask a building question? If there is a second? Go, go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Simple question, since we simplified everything, could you tell me what the permit is for a 2,400 square foot ranch in the city of Wupit under this?
I was giving him a fist bump, sorry.
Could I give you a price on a 29, a 2,900 square foot, four-bedroom, type 5B construction home?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. It would be $4,942 plus the cost for sewer and water, plus the construction management bond of $5,000, which is refundable, provided that no damage is done to public property and provided that the occupant does not occupy prior to receiving a C O.
So I have a question to that. If we plan to automate this down the road, would we have kind of like a form builder that would do that? So we literally put in those specs and?
Absolutely. That would be part of the application where they would have to complete, fill in the various information required to generate the fee.
Awesome. Follow-up?
Yeah, so to the square foot construction cost, who, who's doing that cost? That's from the code council?
That is, that is correct. Right, so that's generated.
And where do they get their data from, since they don't build any actual products? Ever?
Assistant Director Chrissy?
So this is based on national data. I'm trying to find the correct section. They based, given the fact that this is the International Code Council, every municipality that, that uses these codebooks typically are members and so they, they pool the membership for their data. And so this is based on national data for their membership, which would be municipal.
But none of their membership actually builds anything, but, so why they don't pull from a national company that actually builds stuff and puts data out there? Secondly, so when you look at these numbers, I'm looking at the footnotes and there probably should be more footnotes than this, what constitutes, so deduct $21 a square foot if it's an unfinished basement, blah, 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 shells deduct 20%. Is that all going to be calculated in? It's kind of a footnote and I know what happens, I've been through it. Everybody defaults and see, that's what's in the, in the chart. Yeah, but that's not what we're building, so comparing those things, I have a little apprehension. I'm okay with the, doing this, but a little apprehensive because everybody tries to pigeonhole everything into one category and that's really not true, so. Part of my question is what, what data drove that $151.10 a square foot? Because there's so many factors in the house, so, or building.
Assistant Director Chrissy?
That really shouldn't contribute toward cost, in my opinion, but do you have any comment on that or?
Well, I guess my question is, are you referring to perhaps the types of finishes and things like that?
Correct.
Where extras that perhaps are not always common in construction? And I have to say that I do not have that specific information, but I can contact I C C and see if they can identify specifically. But again, it's, it's based on average data, so, you know, and, and again, there's sort of this regional factor, which is why we have the multiplier specific then to us based on kind of where we fall within maybe other communities and how we cover the cost that we've estimated it costs us to deliver services for a new single-family home. So there is variability in there and I think that's why we've, we've factored in, the, the multiplier is, is sort of a, I don't want to say an equalizer, but I mean, it, it helps to sort of smooth for based on kind of where we think our permit cost should be relative to our cost to deliver and then also the cost of some of the adjacent and, and other communities that we've surveyed.
What I would, if I could follow, so, I would contend that in those scenarios, if you do a, call it a 1,500 square foot home and a 4,000 square foot home, so when you multiply all these numbers out, the 4,000 square foot home in relation to the 1,500 square foot home, that fee is much larger, correct?
That's correct.
But it's all the same inspections, right? Doesn't take much longer to look at a 4,000 square foot foundation versus a 1,500 square foot. It's still one trip, assuming there's no re-inspections, right? Visually, it might take them 20 seconds longer. We'll, we'll say a minute maybe.
Assistant Director Chrissy?
I would argue however, that a 4,000 square foot home is likely to have perhaps a second kitchen or perhaps another bathroom or a couple bathrooms and so there is additional work that would typically be found in those. But your point is very valid and we actually had multiple discussions about the best way to do this and honestly, this, this seemed to be the best way that we could come up with in a, that met sort of those criteria that we were looking at when we first started looking at the fee schedule. But I, I mean, there are, there are lots of ways to determine fees and so, you know, if, if there's a, a better way that, that you think we should look into, we can certainly do that.
Of course there's a better way. Go ahead. Well. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's better. I, I'm looking for what, what's fair across the board and I, you know, this is an ongoing issue all over. So to your point of that house could have a second kitchen or three bathrooms versus two bathrooms, which marginally takes more time, but that being said, then why don't you use that as criteria? Because there's national averages for all that stuff.
Assistant Director Chrissy?
Understood. And part of the challenge that we're dealing with now is those exact issues where we're, where we're trying to itemize every single thing and therefore then it's really confusing to try, in as much as we have to calculate fees for gas piping based on linear feet and we have to calculate, you know, I think it's A Cs based, units based on tonnage and we have to calc, and, and so all of these various factors which make determining the fees very cumbersome, not only administratively, but also for then the applicant to understand what are they going to be, be paying. And so like I said, I mean, there, there's so many ways that we can do this and so if you want to have us take another look and, and come up with a different format, we can. There are some communities that actually have flat, flat fees for single-family homes or things like that, but again.
Can I just be clear, for the, for the non-builders up here, you have the I C C, which is this, right? And then you have a built-in equalizer, if I understood, and that's based on surrounding neighborhoods?
It, it takes into account the cost for us to deliver the service, right? To make sure that we're trying to cover our costs and then it also factors in kind of where we fall within the surrounding communities and, and sort of.
Because my thought is, if someone's going to move, they're going to move to the O'Hare area, they're going to move to the, I don't know, West DuPage area and it's going to be us, Itasca, Elk Grove. Where do I go? My mom lives here, I need to be close. I want to make sure that we're at least in line with those cities so that we don't lose, you know, deals to that. So if this gets me close, great. If you have an equalizer that helps get us closer to the local average, I, I'm, I personally am good with it. I guess we'll see what the vote says. Other questions? You guys did? Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Could I have a floor for five minutes, just like Mr. Art Woods?
Somebody turn off his microphone, please?
I'm pretty sure that wasn't five minutes.
Go ahead.
My question is, Mr. Woods, I have a question for you. Are, are you looking, are we looking to eliminate this and come up with our own? I merely posed some questions and, and the difference, you know, that the bigger house essentially gets its weighted against them. And, and really the, the driver is while you're building a bigger house, so you should pay more. But in reality, the cost to administer is only marginally different than the cost. So maybe there should be a plateau, once you hit 2,400 square feet, to go to 3,000 square feet, 50 bucks extra, 100 bucks extra, opposed to a.
We try that with property taxes.
Well, that's a whole other.
Yeah, alright.
I'll be on my soapbox all night. So, so we look at, so, and I'm not a builder up here, so I'm, I'm reflecting over to the builder here. So what we're looking, so what I'm hearing tonight is that we're looking at redoing this with the size of the house, a different fee structure. That's what I'm, I'm hearing here.
Yeah, so based on the size of the house, I hate to say you get penalized, but it just goes back to the property taxing without going to that realm, right? You've got the bigger house, you get penalized even though the same services, same street sweeper, same potholes, same police service. I mean, that's a whole nother area that I see Alderman Woods nodding his head. I wish I could argue the same. You get beat up for the same services, just because they think you can afford it, doesn't mean you should be forced to pay it. So I, I get where he's coming from. Alderman, can I?
Is this what the surrounding communities are also using?
Good question, Alderman, or geez, Alderman Chrissy. Assistant Director Chrissy?
Some of them are, but not all of them. A lot of them, and, and the interesting thing is like Elk Grove Village, for example, they have a very, very, very simple fee structure. However, they also don't charge very much, but again, it's a policy decision on their end whether or not they want to try and recoup costs or not. And so that's really what this is, is a policy decision about the approach that we're taking relative to permit fees. And so again, if the concern is about penalizing or not, we can simply go to a flat fee that we feel covers the cost regardless of the size of the home, but we do have then the, the question of additions and interior renovations because that's based on, on this chart.
Right, so, so follow-up, I'm sorry. So, so Addison, Itasca, Bentonville doesn't use this structure?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thanks.
I would just add to, to that, actually I won't add to it because I just forgot, so I'll actually move on until I think, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I just, to make a comment, to clean stuff up. So I'm not picking on necessarily what we're doing and you can go to all the communities there. It's so varied back and forth, what they do and how they do it, to, to try to match up is almost futile exercise, if you will. That being said, I understand that we want to recoup X amount of dollars and if that's what we're looking to do, my only comment is to, that it, it's heavily weighted, once you get past a certain amount, those people are paying excess over and above what the actual costs are. So if our true goal is to cover 30% or 75% of our cost of the budget, you know, these guys down here are paying 25% and the guys up here are paying 50% and if we're using a square, it's just not balanced.
Director Cage, if you don't mind, and then we'll go back to you.
Thank you. Just, just very briefly, the key for this, we get a lot of questions on fees, the more efficient we are with the answer, the quicker the people get the answer, the quicker the project moves. And efficiency is one thing and it's not about saving our time, it's really the people who call, the people who take the time to come in. You want to get them an answer, the longer they wait, you know, it can be frustrating, the quicker we can get them the answer, they're quicker out the, they're out the door, they can move forward with their project. And I think the consistency is the other key thing. I mean, we've obviously, we use some outside consultants and I think really for me where this came to a head, when you had, you know, relatively new people to the community coming in, trying to fee up a permit and trying to be consistent, and I think we've been doing things a certain way for a number of years and some things work really well and some things don't. So I think the key to me here is whatever, wherever the fee code ends up, if it's consistent and that, you know, Kelly fees something up, I fee something up, the inspectors fee something, it's, it's exactly the same, there's no questions, there's no ambiguity, it's very clear, we get the right numbers, one permit fees up the same as the other, and then someone's in and out the door a lot quicker. That's, that, those are the two key things for me with this.
Could I ask your professional opinion, right? So we're in a unique position for a very similar payment, probably to Itasca, in that size-wise, right? So the, I, I think about, we're smaller, but you know, people like Addison that have just the opportunity to make much more money because you have a bigger community, but we're in a unique position in that we're skyrocketing and modernizing, people want to build and we build, we're building pretty quickly. So in your professional opinion, would it make sense for us to kind of be maybe a little higher, like versus, because we just don't get enough, as much traffic in the door to build like in Addison?
That's, that is an excellent question and that's, that's the discussion that we've been having internally, where do you draw that line? Do you want to be the highest, want to be the lowest, or you want to be somewhere in the middle? And I think you're exactly right, we're a built-out community. I mean, that's just a fact. We, you know, my opinion, we don't want to be the lowest, we don't want to be the highest, we want to be competitive, but the key to all of this, you know, however we end up on the number, is that from a staff standpoint, if I've got someone who's in, you know, a couple of days a week, they're feeding something up, they can feed up in a quick period of time and it's consistent with the person who's in here 40 hours a week.
Okay.
And the numbers are the same, you call up, what's the permit fee for X square foot addition? We can get them answered quickly, get them out the door. And you know what, I think with a lot of these things, the, where I see the benefit of being competitive with other communities and I call a number of other communities to see what they, what standards they have, is time and efficiency. This day and age, the sooner you get the answer, the clearer the answer, the quicker you're going to make a decision. And if you call another community and it takes them a day or two to get back to you, you got a better feeling from, if you call someone today, they call you back within an hour, you get the answer and the answer doesn't change.
Sales 101, right?
Exactly.
Okay, I like it. Cool. All right, be on that side. Mayor?
So, I know this is the new system. The old system was they gave you the dollar value of the project, so 15, I'm just going to throw fake numbers out here real quick. So 1,500 square foot home, 250,000, 300,000, 30,000 square foot home, 500,000. They paid on, before it was, the fee was based on what the dollar value was, correct?
So there was actually a couple different fees that would be involved. One of them for plan review is based on the volume of the space and that's, so that's the plan review fee and then the permit fee is based on the construction value. And then there's some supplemental fees that, based on the scope of the work, then may be rolled in there as well. So there's a variety of different calculation methods that are currently required, which again, makes it very convoluted and difficult to administer.
And that's what Director Cage was talking about, the ambiguities.
Correct.
This kind of makes it, is it the perfect system? Probably not. I don't know if there's a better system, if somebody's got a better idea. I mean, I just, that was one of my main concerns, I want to make sure we're not, you know, so 3,000 square foot house now is what? You said, what was it, 2,900 was?
About 4,900 dollars.
4,900 dollars.
For, under the proposed scenario. I do want to point out though, that the, that under our current fees, it's 7,800. So.
So it went down 3,000.
Correct, correct. And so I, I understand the, the concerns and again, we, we batted this around for months, trying to understand what would be the best structure and honestly, I don't know that we have a really good answer because all of the structures have flaws and so certainly we can take another look if, if you'd like us to, but we'd like some direction as to what you'd be looking for, perhaps different.
So I want to follow up, so basically you just said, on the single-family 3,000 square foot home, our fees just went down 3,000. So this isn't that the city's trying to make a money grab here.
Correct.
We're actually trying to streamline.
And encourage.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure I understood it correctly and I understand, nothing's perfect. You know, some people want to buy the big homes and have to pay the taxes, God bless them.
Sunny. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, one last comment. So, as was said, I mean, there is no perfect system, so as, as much as I could argue, it's just in my nature to impart and it really isn't about how much I pay is how we divvy up that number. So this, for everybody up here, this system will be as good as any other system running in any other community and I argue with all of them, so.
Just one last question, could we go to the last slide? There was something, I actually took notes and waited to the end as well, on the, the cause damage to the public right of way, well, excuse me, the construction management bond that you talked about. Did I hear you right? You said, can you talk about that really quick? Maybe I missed something. I just want to make sure our residents are protected and not less protected under what you're proposing?
So we're not proposing a change to the language in the code. So we're not proposing a change to the language in the code. The, the code actually provides for, well, we are to a certain extent. So currently, the code requires that every permit has to maintain a cash bond. And so what we're trying to move to is eliminating the cash bond requirement for most permit types, except for those that we've identified a construction management bond on this fee schedule. And so those types of projects would be the projects that are new, new construction, even additions, as well as some significant interior remodels, if there's work in the right of way, or if there's utility work that then could have an impact on public utilities. Because that is where the potential damage to public property could come into play.
Okay, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with the right of way. I'm, I'm concerned about some of those smaller projects. I, I worry about my residents more than I worry about the right of way, sorry. But, so I just want to make sure that we're not, in some of these smaller projects, that we're not putting somebody at risk, even if it's a small project, that a senior, let's say, wants to do. Because if you're saying there's no bond, then what do you, what, how do we protect a resident in, in an inspection coming back? Or inspector going there, making sure that the work was done correctly? Is that, is there not, is that not why there is a bond, correct? No, okay.
So the bond requirement is to protect public property, that is the intention behind the bond. Currently, the minimum bond is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. That, if, if something is damaged in the public right of way, that does nothing to try and replace that or repair that. And so we're, we're trying to structure the actual dollar amounts required for the bond, relative to what type of damage could be done based on the type of work it is. So we're eliminating it in most instances. But what I would also say is that, so for a homeowner or a developer, this bond can be cash if they choose, or it can be some other form of security, so it can be a letter of credit, or it can be a surety bond. Those are all acceptable forms, and they are refundable if it's a cash bond. It's refundable, provided that there's no damage done and, and that they've met all of the conditions, so.
I was just, I was just confused that it was our public right of way. I, I, I thought that bond protected the resident's damage, so that, that's where I was confused.
No.
Okay. Director, Director Cage, sir.
Sorry, just to piggyback on that, in terms of the residents, I mean, obviously, that's a key element. That's why we require the general contractors to be registered and have their insurance. Because if, if there's a problem, that's where we have the ability to go after the contractor for the work.
Great.
The bonds that, you know, that I see and sign off on day in, day out, often, you know, coming from the contractor or from the homeowner for a hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty dollars, it's lumped into the permit application fee, so it seems like the fee is a lot higher when it really comes back. And what happens is someone's doing, performing a, you know, picking up a permit for a roof, they go out, do the work, we do the final inspection, and then it has to go through a number of steps to get the bond returned to the, you know, the person who paid it. And it's a lot of extra steps, you know, depending on when they get the inspection, it's a few months before they get that money back. If, if I'm Joe homeowner, and I'm paying an extra two hundred and fifty bucks, I want to get it back as soon as I'm done.
Right.
And quite frankly, the process that we have right now is, is not very efficient, because then it comes to myself, it goes through finance, then we have to issue a check. So the streamlining of that does not hurt the residents. It actually helps them when they're picking up the permit, speeds things up, reduces the actual fee that they pay upfront, because we always have to explain the, the bond part, the two fifty or the one twenty-five. And then we, we, the resident and the city is still protected with the registration.
And it improves the experience, it sounds like, once again. Okay.
Yes.
Cool. Good, 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 good. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have, I have one question on the sign code. Temporary sign permit fees, construction sign, and non-resident district, and non-resident real estate signs? So like twenty-five to eighty, what, what is considered temporary signs?
You, John Farrell, Ms. Chrissy?
So temporary signs are, say, for example, there's a special, and somebody wants to erect a sign for twenty-eight days. That would be considered a temporary sign. However, we also have real estate signs for commercial properties, those are considered temporary signs. Real estate signs for a single-family home is exempt from permit, provided that it meets the size limitations.
So, can I do a follow-up?
Yes, please.
So the question is temporary signs, so if the fact that a real estate sign or building sign goes off, it's worth, worth for rent? So that's only a temporary sign for twenty-eight days? So now, that's what I, I heard tonight. So are you telling me we're going to tell those people whose businesses and sites move those signs twenty-eight days up? And give me another seventy-five dollars? I mean, I.
Assistant Director Chrissy?
I apologize that I lumped those two together. Temporary signage for the commercial real estate is valid for six months. And so after six months, if they still need to have those signs up, then they come in and they renew for another six months. So.
Go ahead.
Normal.
How many, six months? Shouldn't this be a yearly fee then? Because I'll tell you, so how many six months do they get? So every six months, they could come in and renew signs like that?
Assistant Director Chrissy?
There is no limitation currently in the sign code for the number of times that real estate signs, commercial real estate signs can be up. Because the idea would be to, as soon as they leased up the space, then the sign would come down, because they no longer have space available. And so the goal would be to help assist them to find a tenant to lease that space up.
So back to temporary signs, so if we go ahead and, and someone has a big sale in town, let's say, promoting something, okay? So they put the signs in, in, in the parkway or wherever it requires. So are we telling them that it would cost them eighty, eighty dollars to put those temporary signs in the parkway for sixty days? Or wherever they may be allowed to?
Ms. Chrissy?
So the commercial temporary signs would be the forty dollars, and those would be for twenty-eight days. And they can put those up, I believe, four different times during the year. So say, for example, a flower shop wants to put up Mother's Day special on a sign, they could erect this, put that sign up, pay the forty dollars, keep it up for twenty-eight days, and they would have to be strategic about when they want to place that up, and then it would have to come down. If they wanted to do another special in another month, they could come back in, apply for another temporary sign permit, and then put it up for another twenty-eight days. And so they would have four periods of those twenty-eight days. However, and they could do it all at once if they choose, and they could then have one continuous, you know, time period, or they could break it up into four different time periods.
So, four times?
That is correct.
And I said, looking for to cover the cost for it? So if the business puts it up every weekend, what are we doing about that? If the business, it doesn't, Tom?
Well, if they're putting up a sign on the weekend and it doesn't have a permit, then we need to pursue code enforcement. If it's that, because they're only allowed the four per year. So they can't have it where, it, it's a, it's a complete period, right? So you can't do four days, and then four days, and then four days, where you have to have it up continuously for, for twenty-eight days? Or, I mean, it would be a new, a new period.
See, I don't agree with that at all. And I'll tell you the reason why I don't agree with it. Now we're hurting businesses that's trying to promote businesses to get revenue into the community. My concern is with those temporary signs that go in, in front of businesses, I think they should be allowed to do it. Not constantly, but there shouldn't be a fee for that. Because we're trying to increase business sales and, and give tax, more tax dollars, okay? But if a company wants to go out and put those signs out, they should be able to do it without not paying a permit. That's why it's there. Because how, you're hurting any businesses that's trying to promote anything else. Because, you know, then, then you got other non-taxing bodies, we need to billboard signs all over places. They only have to cover a permit because it's.
I, 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 I would argue that it loses effectiveness. If twenty businesses in a row have a sign up, I'm not paying attention anymore. So you could actually cause more harm than good, in my opinion. All right, we have a roll call, or we have a, a second, or excuse me. We have a motion, we have a second. Can we do a roll call? Mayor?
So you had the motion, the second. There wasn't any changes unless Alderman Catalano, you guys were still debate, wanted to debate that one item that Alderman Catalano said, otherwise.
I would like to debate that and see what, you know, in some communities, they do that every other year.
And. And. I got a follow-up on that.
Okay. Like the, the inspection fee for the apartments.
So Alderman Catala, so there's a motion on the floor in a second. Alderman Catalano is proposing that we amend this to be bi-yearly?
Every other year.
Every other year, we'll just say that.
For rental inspection.
For rental inspection.
Residential.
Yeah. Multi-family residential buildings. And I saw two hands go up.
And that way, we can alternate, be like, as far as the whole city, we can do one year, we can do one section. The other year, we can do another section. I don't know if that would help with staff time.
It's on demand, though.
Yeah.
That's the only thing. Meaning like, correct me if I'm wrong, it's on demand, like, someone's got to move, right? We don't, are we doing a yearly inspection or only when they move out?
No.
Is it, okay. Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, I have a point, and then Ms. Chrissy has a point as well. Just for, I don't know if you'd say point of order, but that particular code section is not in twelve, thirteen, or seventeen. So if we were to change it, would just be some direction, it couldn't be part of the motion, because that's not up for discussion tonight. So it'd be a direction to go back and revamp that. And also, I think there's something in the code relative to passage one year, and then they get a year off for something. Ms. Chrissy could talk about, which actually, can't even think addresses what you're.
So is it not a discussion for tonight?
Right. I mean, I'm happy to explain what the code provides for, but the, the fees or the, the process to do that is not actually part of the.
That discussion.
The agenda. But to, to clarify, the, the code does provide for, in the event that a rental housing unit has passed an inspection, they do not need to be subsequently inspected the following year, which allows us to have the housing inspector focus on those more problematic properties that fail on a routine basis, and try and focus our efforts on those. And then we kind of circle back, so that there is a little bit of relief for the properties that are, are in compliance. And so we can take another look at the language that's in there, but I do believe that your concern is, is already sort of addressed by the, the provisions currently.
Okay. Would that, if that had to be a future item that Alderman Catalano would put on, would that be building, building and zone? Where would that fall? Building zoning?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so maybe save that. Mayor, or Brad first, then Mayor?
Just real quick, just want to clarify that if, if they, if they pass and they get the year off from the inspection, they still have to register and pay the registration fee every year.
Yes.
But then they just get the year off of the, the inspections. They still have to register as a rental property and pay, correct? It's the way it's written if they, if they pass applying colors.
Think about it as a future item?
Yeah.
For.
Okay.
Go ahead. All right, Mayor?
Right, and a lot of the buildings we have aren't just simple, like, three flats. We don't have that many three flats, we have more multi-family, six, eight, right? And there's sprinkler systems in all these buildings. I would imagine the fire department's got to check a lot of these buildings, correct? Yes. Some of, I know we've got a lot of different types of buildings.
Does the fire department check every year as well?
That's.
Ms. Chrissy?
They do, they have to, right, they have to verify compliance with, you know, fire alarm testing, sprinkler testing, those types of things. And then the rental housing inspector also does an inspection of like the common areas, for example, in terms of egress and things like that. But he's also looking for other, other issues as well.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. We have a mo, so we're, we're not going to amend the motion, we're going to keep the motion as is, and we have a second. Can you do a roll call, Eileen?
You were the second.
I was the second, yeah. Alderman Sizmarski was the second, you're sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm so, could I ask for clarification?
Sure.
The, the building code board of appeals, did we want to include that fee as part of this, or do we want to exclude that?
So I don't know if we, I mean, I touched on it, then I think I interrupted and brought you back to the one top, topic before it, so.
I'll confirm that.
Yes. Could you talk, could you talk about that really quickly? Because I see a lot of blank stares here.
Sure, so this is a, this is a process that's similar with the Community Development Commission, where in the event that somebody is requesting an appeal of a decision by the building official, they can take that appeal to the building code board of appeals. That similar process that we have for the CDC, there is a fee for requesting that process. And so the question here is, do we want to have the same fee as we do for a similar process?
Can we do it where if I'm an existing homeowner, I don't have to pay that? And maybe for, or, or like an existing structure, so we're not penalizing existing homeowners?
I, I would prefer not to do that. I would prefer if you're not interested in the fee, that we just don't charge it. It, it's going to be difficult to administer, because then we have to ask a whole bunch of qualifying questions to determine if they are, would require to pay the fee or not.
I, I just don't, I, I don't personally want to penalize my people, you know, our residents for, for wanting to come back and contest something, because they can't afford it, right? Same token, I mean, if you're a builder, people want to build here, in my, that's my opinion, I'm just saying. People want to build here, but I probably opens us up to some legal ramifications as well. So the mayor's antsy, so I will let him shoot me down.
No, this is very simple. So we have a building code of, a board of appeals, right? In the last, I believe, three years or four years, they maybe once, because not everything can be appealed, okay? So if everything can be appealed, you know, there's only certain things, and I know we don't have that list in front of us, that can be appealed. Not everything can be appealed, because otherwise, everybody who gets said no is going to come back and appeal, and appeal, and appeal. It's not what you're thinking. I, I just think the same thing till, you know, I was explained the situation years ago.
Okay.
It's, it's, you can't just appeal because you don't like the decision.
Okay.
Not everything's.
Okay. So do we, do we need to take an actual roll call on that? So Eileen, would you take a roll call on?
Are we, are you adding that?
Well, so how do we?
As recommended, where you would have to make the motion as recommended by staff.
Oh, okay. So the motioner was who, Alderman Eugene Wesley? Yes? Would you like to amend your original motion to include as recommended by staff, which the recommendation is to eliminate the three hundred dollar?
No, no, add.
Add, excuse me, add, gosh.
That's a short name. He needs a different coffee.
To add the three hundred dollar fee, correct? Okay, do you want to retract your motion? Okay. All right, so we have no motion on the floor. Does anybody want to make a new motion? Oh. Alderman Woods?
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation as presented.
Roll, questions? Go ahead.
The only reason why I'm looking at holding back is because I want to go back to them and have a look at those fee structure for those houses that Mr. Woods brought up, and maybe we need to look at that.
Well, we'll see if this.
I mean, that's, that's the only reason why I'm saying, let's pull it back.
It's been identified, it's been identified there's gaps in everyone, so let's just see if this vote passes, then we, we see what happens. If it doesn't pass, then you can make that motion to revisit, it's really the only option. I think you can take a roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Item to be considered in future meetings, White Oaks Park District, IGA, on April twenty-sixth. Motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
Meeting adjourned.
Long five minutes, Kelly.